All right, I'm going to call the East Fiscal Zoning Board meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
James Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have one more member, but she's just going to be a couple of minutes late, so we have a quorum. We're good to go. Okay, regarding our agenda this evening, application or the item number one has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item number two, the applicant, we scheduled it for public hearing, but the applicant specifically requested he's away this month, so he requested to be on for next month. And I think that's all the changes we have right now. So, we do have one set of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the first couple items we have on our agenda...
The upcoming meetings.
Thank you. All right, so our next two meetings coming up are Tuesday, July 24th, and Tuesday, August 28th. We do have several items on our agenda this evening that are public hearings, and so these are the opportunity for you as neighbors to comment on applications that the board's already had an opportunity to review. And then there are four applications that are, we are seeing for the first time, so those are not appropriate for public comment at this time, except our conversation with the applicants. Those will be scheduled for comments from the neighbors and public hearings at a later date. So with that said, I'm going to actually start with item number three, Appeal 3871 De Palma. James De Palma, 2194 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 919 square foot variance and a three-foot height variance for an existing 28-foot by 38-foot two-story detached garage, and a 400-square-foot variance for a proposed 20-foot by 20-foot addition to the garage, which is located in front of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. De Palma. Okay, so last month, we had the opportunity to review your application. You are at the corner of Route 52 and Shenandoah. So I understand your house actually faces Shenandoah and not 52, but 52 is considered a front yard because of the, just the, there is no other lot in between you and the state road there. So, years ago, you put it in a garage all complete with permits, and you got the CEO for that garage. You're now looking to do an addition, no additional garage door, but it would give you an extra, about 400 square feet of space for you to be able to, you know, work on your hobby, as we talked about last month. There is no residential living space in that garage, is what you're proposing?
Correct.
It's just going to be normal garage stuff, and like we said, kind of workshop for what you're proposing to do. So the, and you're proposing to put this addition to the right side of the existing garage, so it would be closer to the existing house, but again, still a little distance away from the existing house?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So there's no, the garage is not going to be any closer to Route 52 behind, it's just going to be in line with what's there. It's not going to be any closer to Shenandoah Road in the front.
Right.
Yeah, so, so we, like I said, I think we covered most of our concerns last month. Obviously, the materials are going to be the same as the existing house.
Correct.
Because, you know, you just want it to look nice for the neighborhood there. So, are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I have no question.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from James De Palma, 2194 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 919 square foot variance and a three-foot height variance for an existing garage, and a 400-square-foot variance for a proposed addition to the garage? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution?
Reference to Appeal 3871 by James De Palma, reference to a 919 square foot variance, foot variance, and a three-foot height variance for an existing 28-foot by 32-foot two-story detached garage, and a 400-square-foot variance for a proposed 20-foot by 20-foot addition to the garage, which is located in front of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Located at 2194 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variances, whereas this action is a type-two action under Secur, and no further action is required, whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, as the existing garage was built in 2005 and received a certificate of compliance. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant would like the addition in order to work on his collection of pedal cars and use the space adjacent to his existing garage. Requested variance is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set. Now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
Okay? Have a good night.
Sure.
All right, item number four, Appeal 3874 Shelton. Kelvin Shelton, 1349 Route 82, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a four-foot sideline and 14-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling which was built in 1953, and an expansion of a non-conforming building pursuant to Section 194-17 and 121 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so last month, we had the opportunity to review your application. The addition you're proposing to do is not going to make your, doesn't impact the fact that the one house of your, the one side of your lot or something is smaller than it should be. It's, you're putting it, the addition actually on the other side. So you have an existing house built in 1953 that, right now, doesn't meet the current code. And so the addition that you're proposing to put on there is not going to make that condition any worse. It's, and moving it wouldn't actually help the circumstances. We did actually look into the, what you mentioned last month about the lot line realignment for the lot next door, and it wasn't, apparently didn't impact this lot directly, if I remember what I was told.
Correct.
Okay? So it's, that didn't make this condition as it is, okay? So with that being said, we're really addressing the fact that your house, like I said, the existing conditions just don't, don't meet current code.
Correct.
So, but you're not making, what you're proposing to do isn't making that condition any worse. Any questions from board members? That was confusing, sorry.
And for the record, the applicant...
I found it.
For the record, the lot is extremely narrow and long, so even though he has acreage value, it's kind of the way the lot is defined.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members? Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Kelvin Shelton, 1349 Route 82, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot sideline and a 14-foot front line variance for an existing dwelling built in 1953? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's Appeal number 3874 for Kelvin Shelton. It's a four-foot sideline variance and a 14-foot front line variance for a pre-existing dwelling which was built in 1953, and an expansion of a non-conforming building pursuant to Section 194-17 and 194-21 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas the action is a type-two action under Secur, no further action is required. Whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community as the house is pre-existing. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant wants to build an addition onto the house, which will meet the required setbacks. The variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, as the house has been there since 1953. Now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set. Now you just deal with the building department.
All right.
All right, have a good evening.
All right.
Item number five, Appeal 3875 Steer. Iris Steer, 33 Pitcher Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 17-foot rear line variance for a proposed hardscaping, as shown on the plan submitted pursuant to Section 194-93 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so last month, we had the opportunity to review your application. You are, you are resident of Hopewell Glen, which, by the nature of those lots, are smaller lots, because it was created as a sub, a cluster subdivision. So you actually have open space, dedicated open space behind your lot, so the impact of you really doing much in your backyard and impacting somebody behind you is extremely limited. And so you've come to this board with a frankly beautiful plan of, you know, of a tremendous amount of work that you're looking to do to your backyard, including a fire pit and like an outdoor kitchen, some seating areas, lots of landscaping, so you're, you know, talking about screening this very well from your neighbors. We did mention that you are not on a cul-de-sac, so you do actually have neighbors on both sides. And so when we were talking about this last week, we identified that there were a couple additional items from what you originally proposed that needed some, the extra variances for, but we were going to look to take care of all of that at the same time. So, we spent some time last month, again, making sure we had measurements right and what was going to be where. So, with that being said, are there any comments or questions from board members?
There's an issue about the homeowners association. Were those issues resolved?
Yes, I actually have here a letter from the homeowners association.
Okay, good. We'll read that into the record, that would be great. Come on, thank you. Thank you. All right, so just for the record, dated June 13th, 2018, approved ARB 33 Pitcher Court, Hopewell Junction, to whom it may concern, the request for exterior modification to the home located at 33 Pitcher Court was approved by the majority of the Homewoman Glen HOA Board on April 30th, 2018. The approval was conditional upon the buyer obtaining the required variance from the town. And then, so this is signed from Ryan McGrath on behalf of Hopewell Glen Homeowners Association. All right, we'll put that in the file, okay?
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to comment for or against the request from Iris Steer, 33 Pitcher Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 17-foot rear line variance for proposed hardscaping? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Appeal number 3875. Applicant is Iris Steer, requesting a 17-foot rear line variance for a proposed hardscaping, as shown on the plan submitted pursuant, pursuant to Section 194-93 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Essen, whereas applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas this action is a type-two action under Secur, and no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by any other means, the variance requested is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the above stated variance, subject to the following condition, the hardscaping plan must be approved by the Hopewell Glen Homeowners Association.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. All right, now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
All right? Have a good evening. All right, that is the end of our public hearings for the evening. I hope you understand, we spend much more time on the reviews, so that your public hearings do run smoothly, so. So with that said, we're up to item number six, which is Appeal 3872 Slow Shower. Eddie Slow Shower, 40 Brandy Lane, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a four-foot height variance for a 38, for 38 feet of existing eight-foot lattice fencing, which is in front of the dwelling, a four-foot height variance for 115 linear feet of existing eight-foot height, high lattice fencing, as well as a two-foot setback variance for all fencing pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, so last month, we looked at this for the first time. There, we, we had an older version of your survey. I understand you've now brought us in a new survey, so we have that. So the, your, let's start with, drainage easement is much clearer now, okay? So there is a 20-foot wide drainage easement, but it does show that your fence is going down smack in the middle of it on your property line. So at least on this side, for, past your house, we do need, if that, if the fence is going to stay where it is, it does need the two-foot variance.
I don't have a...
You don't have the new, yeah, we can... If you remember the survey we had last month, it was really, really, really hard to read, so. Here's another one you guys can share. Pam, we're good. We're good. Okay, so, front of the house, so along the right side of your house, the fence line is definitely on your property line, past your house, okay? Now, on the other side of the house, it's not, so you don't need the two-foot variance on that side, okay? However, your fence goes beyond your property line in the rear of the, of the yard, so at a minimum, that's got to come down, because we can't approve anything that shows your fence encroaching on somebody else's property. So that has to be corrected.
Okay.
Okay? Do you see?
So that's the corner.
Yeah, well, yeah, it kinda...
Just so you know, that corner section, wire fence, that whole kennel thing is not there.
Okay, that's fine, but if you see more in the middle of that rear line, of your rear property line, the fence is well beyond your property.
Yeah, but this is a survey from February 2003.
But he did tell us last month that he still has wire mesh fence in his...
Are we talking about the back part?
More in the middle of the back lot.
Here?
Yes.
Okay, that's not, so it'll be...
That's what?
That was moved.
Oh, okay, so it's on your property now?
When Mr. Miller came and cleaned everything out, I had to take that down.
Okay.
And he graded...
The rear of your property?
Whatever, you know, to make the gully, whatever he was doing, correct. And he took all the trees down. There's one giant willow, kind of right in the middle, and I, when he took everything, I put the fence straight across...
The front of it.
When I put the wire fence back up.
Okay, so where we talked about...
So where that goes, where it says that encroachment, 4.96, and bends out?
Yes.
It, that doesn't, and out into the gully, it's...
It's not there anymore?
No.
Okay, and you believe you moved it in?
I did the best I could with what, I did the best I could. I moved it in a couple of feet, because he had to do work, and I just tried to make it, from an appearance standpoint, not to be buckling out, then in, then out, then in, and I just ran it straight across.
Okay, all right. So you do have, I noted earlier that there's a 20-foot drainage easement on the side of your house. You do also have a 20-foot drainage easement on the rear of your house, so...
Right.
That you're just commenting that the previous highway...
Yeah, that's, that whole thing's a, is the gully where the runoff is, right.
Okay. And so what we talked about is the fact that if the fence were brought down to six feet, honestly, you, you wouldn't need the height variance, or if it's brought down to four feet, you wouldn't need the variance either, but you, and if you brought, was brought down to four feet, you wouldn't even need the side yard variance, because then you don't have to worry about that two-foot side.
On the right side, right.
So, and the way you, your fence is designed, is you have two of the four-foot by eight-foot lattice boards going across, so not, they don't go up and down, they go side to side. So if you remove the top board, you wouldn't even need this variance.
We'd be at the fourth, right?
Right.
On the right-hand side of the property.
So again, I, because you know I live right down the street, so I...
Oh, you've seen it.
I drove, drove by again the other day, and I noticed the chicken wire fence that you have in, in the front there?
Right.
Okay, the wire mesh fence. And that's not eight feet tall, so...
No.
You know, because what we talked about last month was the fact that you're, you mentioned that you wanted the fence for privacy sake, to keep the deer out, to keep the dogs and children out, or in, whatever, the case may be.
It's always there, right.
Which, again, we have granted a six-foot fence for somebody who had, you know, more dogs that were of a nature that they would jump higher, et cetera, stuff like that. In this case, you know, that's, it's not clear that that's really what's going to happen here.
I'm just saying, it was, it was always there. If you're telling me your recommendation is to take a chainsaw...
We, we, well, we talked about the fact that the fence is probably beyond its useful life, so in...
Right, and as you saw, I did start to make repairs.
I did notice, and in the front section, that yes, you had made, started making repairs. And it, actually, I was up there with my iPad, I took a picture, I have it here in case the board wants to see it. The picture like goes, shows right through the lattice, so it's not probably affording a whole lot of privacy.
Well, when all the pine trees were there, but that was a different story.
Right, you did mention that last, that last month.
I just took it all down, that's what was there. I hadn't touched it, unfortunately, over time, the weather, the storms, little by little, it's starting to...
I mean, your stockade fence affords you a heck of a lot more privacy, the stockade fence you have on the left side. But you, the code now allows you to do a six-foot fence right to the front line of your house...
Okay.
As long as it's the two feet in. So, you may want to consider, as you're replacing the, the fence, as it kind of falls apart, to...
Oh, on the, you mean on the left-hand side, yeah.
Yeah, replace it with the six-foot pieces of...
Well, on the, the left-hand side, that is six feet. Are we talking the left, the lattice, or are we talking the stockade? I'm sorry.
Well, you have lattice on the left side, too, in the front.
Yes.
In the front, and then it goes to stockade.
Correct.
So you do start with the eight foot, and then it drops down to the six foot.
To the six.
So, but, and again, you're not on the property line.
Well, when I repair it, I could just take the lattice out and continue with the six, or I could just chop it.
Chop it down halfway.
And it'll be four, and...
If you chop it down halfway, you don't need the variance at all. That's our point.
Okay, what...
Then we refund your money, and you get to go home, and...
Tell me what the easiest...
The one on the right has to come down, right?
No, not if it's four feet. If it's four feet, it's allowed to be on the property line.
It's...
But that's in the drainage easement, right? Is that what we're saying?
No, it's not. Well, it's in the drainage easement, but Tom did say that we're, we could be okay with that, because the town has been able to do work in the drainage easement. So as long as they can work around it, they have the right, they'd have to be able to go inside his fence.
I mean, honestly, I can't remember the last time they were there to do anything on that side, and...
Well, the usual policy is, is if you put a fence or something like that, we don't interfere with it, but the property owner knows we have the right to take it down if we have to...
Yeah, if work has to be done, obviously.
Then grant a variance on it, is that what you're...
No, it does, if it's four feet, it doesn't need a variance.
I'm saying, I'm totally...
But if it's a six-foot fence, it still needs the two-feet-in variance.
Yeah, but he's within, well, he's not all the way.
Yeah, it's not in, it's not in the two feet on that right-hand side, so he would need, not just, if he...
That's my question, do we grant a variance for something that's in an easement, or we then say it can stay, I don't know?
Well, that's, that's a dilemma, but again, if he goes to the four feet, he doesn't need us. We refund his money, and he gets to go home.
Okay. So the simplest thing is do some work, do some cutting on the lattice fencing.
And just thinking the money he'll save, by less product you have to buy.
That is, that is true.
I, I'm just...
Look, like I said, the thing's been there for 25, 30 years, I'm just trying to come here and what's the right thing to do.
Right.
And I know that there's also a conversation with the town board about grandfathering in all the fences coming up for a conversation at the next town board meeting.
So do you want to...
Wait.
...toll your application? What do you want to do?
Well, here's my, I don't, well, Tom, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but it is on the agenda for the town board that they're going to have a public hearing to grandfather in fences and sheds built prior to December 31st, 2017.
But fences that violate the code?
By misspeaking, or...
Yeah, let's be clear.
It's still a little...
The details are yet to be worked out.
Right.
There was a discussion at a workshop about having an amnesty period for sheds and fences.
Okay.
And there was various discussions about what would be grandfathered and whatnot, so it's not yet written, it's not yet decided, but...
Well, yeah, are they likely to approve eight-foot fences?
I don't want to speak for the town board until they discuss it further.
Yeah, so again, if you...
But you are correct, that was discussed at the workshop.
Okay, so here, I...
So if you're that close, I would just move it for another couple of months, and...
Well, that was my other thing, I mean, obviously, if it doesn't work, I'll take it, you know, I'll take it down, but then if I don't have to take it down, and they grandfather it in, I'm just, I'll just fix it and go that route. I mean, I'm not in a hurry, if I, if I take it down now, or I take it down in October, it, or not take it down, is really not, not in a hurry.
Yeah, we, we can't.
As my...
Yeah, we, we can't.
What they may or may not do.
And, and who knows, they may act on it, or they may wait six months to do it.
Okay, so if I say, if I ask, request to table it till after, am I permitted to do that, to come back in front of you again, and we have this conversation again?
Yeah, they can do that.
You can put it over, sure.
Okay, let's just, I got enough projects going on right now, if I could delay that for a couple of months, I will.
Okay, do, do me a favor.
Sure.
Put it in writing to the, to Pam, the clerk.
Okay, I'll put...
With your request, all right? And this way, because we're still in review, we're not in public hearing, so there's no
Okay, so I could put it back...
Legal obligation for us at this point, but you put your request in writing.
So I could request, because there, that's for, if they pass it, it's August, so I'll send Pam a letter requesting to come back to you in September. Pam a letter requesting to come back to you in September.
Okay.
Would that be reasonable?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, September is fine.
And then we can make, we'll figure everything out at that point.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate your time this evening. Nice evening.
You, too. Okay, item number seven, Appeal 3873, Rugo, right, Brian? Am I saying that correctly? Thank you. Patrick Rugo, 30 Roundhill Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a fifteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed thirty-foot by forty-foot detached garage pursuant to section 194-107c of the zoning ordinance. All right, last month, it was identified to us from the building department that there were multiple violations on the property. We clear?
Right.
They're all taken care of, was...
Right, he actually purchased the house, and several of those violations were present before he bought the house, so he took the fences down, bought the chain link and the decorative fence, he removed the hot tub, and the swing set has come down.
Okay.
I have pictures here, if you want them, just for the record, or...
That's fine, Pam can put them in the record before you leave, that's fine. Okay, so take us through the request here.
The applicant has several vehicles, he's a mechanic by trade, and what he wants to do is do a detached garage that's located on the side of the house. The way the contours of the land are, it kind of naturally forces the detached garage right in front of his driveway, which is to the side of his house. We're looking for a side yard setback to allow the construction of that, I believe it's thirty by forty. He's been in contact with his neighbor, we're going to put up some screening along the side of the garage to match what is there now, which is some evergreen pine trees. And it appears, based upon the conversations I've had with him, that the neighbor is okay with the structure being located there.
Okay, all right, when we actually saw this last month, we were actually pretty okay with it, it was just the violations that came to our attention, so... And second floor?
Just storage.
Just storage?
Yep.
No residential space, no work?
No.
You know, no mechanical, commercial mechanical work in the garage? All right, any comments or questions from board members? Because we did actually see this already last month.
Yeah, I'm pretty straightforward.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
To advertise.
To advertise.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Pam, we'll give you your instructions for your sign, and we'll see you next month.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Item number eight, Appeal 3877, Padavan, Louisa Padavan, 59 West Iconic Road, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a two-foot variance for a six-foot fence, which is located in front of the house pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi.
So we understand that you own multiple lots in this area, and so the person who's being impacted by your fence is you, is your own properties next door, right? And so this fence has been up for years, is my understanding?
Well, I replaced it.
But you replaced it, right?
It was up since 1978, '79, something like that, so...
Right.
It was falling apart, it was wood, I could show you pictures, and it was really bad for the neighborhood. So what I did was, I just replaced it. But now I didn't understand that if you replace something, you have to get a permit for it?
Well, it's just the nature of the fact that your fence is six feet high, and it extends in front of the house? That's what the circumstance is?
Not in front of the house, it's just the side of the house, and I had a six-foot fence there since 1978.
So it doesn't extend beyond the front of the house?
Not the front, no.
It does.
What, the white fence? It only goes, it goes up to the, oh, the front of the house, I thought you meant this way, right in front of the house.
It's on the side, but it passes the front.
On the side, all the way down, yeah.
That's fine. So it's on both sides, or just the one side? Just the one side? And you own the house on the other side of that fence?
Yeah.
You own the lot and the house on the other side?
I don't own the other house, I just own the house by the fence. The other side, the guy told me was awesome, he loved it, because he hated the wooden one.
Oh, okay, okay.
They don't age very well.
So I thought you meant in front of my house like that.
So what year did you actually replace the fence?
Well, I think I put down eight years, but I replaced it ten years ago, because I found the...
Found the receipt or something?
I found the receipts, so it's really ten years.
Okay, but in reality, the fence has been there for 47 years. Is the fence two feet in? Do you have a survey of where this fence is?
Not really, it's right next to the house next to me.
Okay, the question is, is it on your property line, or...
Oh, yes, it's on my lot.
Okay, a six-foot fence by code is supposed to be two feet in, but if it was installed, what year?
Seventy...
Ten years ago.
No, 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 but the first fence went up in seventy...
1978.
Seventy-two.
Yeah, so when did the code go into effect for the two feet for the six-foot fence?
It was after that, it would have been after that.
It would have been after then, so... So should we just advertise this with a two-foot sideline variance and cover it?
Yeah, you might as well to cover it.
Okay. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Let's assume it's on the property line, and...
Neighbor likes it?
Yep.
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to see you next month, we're going to have letters sent out to your neighbors, just to make sure your neighbors don't have any problem with it. If you talk to that neighbor again, if he wants to put, writing a letter to us, that would be great, and he doesn't have to come then, okay? And then, but Pam will, has to give you your instructions, you do have to put a sign on the front of your yard there, just so that your neighbors see that we're going to have a public hearing for this, okay?
Okay.
And then you'll come back next month, and then hopefully, we should be able to finish it up then.
So who gives me a sign?
Pam's going to give you your instructions, and then you'll have to stop back in town hall one day and visit with Pam in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Okay?
And what about the shed? There is an issue with the shed?
Yes.
That's been taken care of, I believe.
That's been taken care of?
Max has been going out.
Okay, all right, so the building department has taken care of that, that's not anything for us to worry about.
Okay.
Okay?
So it's just the fence?
Yes.
I got to worry about that.
You don't mind, come get the instructions for the fence? Pam's right here, at the end.
So I'll come see you in a couple of days? Just put this on the fence?
No, no, no.
The sign you'll get.
Those are the instructions, so just read.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'll see you. Okay. I'll kind of, oh, no.
Don't worry, whenever...
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You, too.
And let's guess what you're here for. Item number nine. You cleared the room, really? All right, Appeal 3878, say your last name, Mitchnik?
Malonik.
Malonik?
Malonik, Malonik.
Okay.
All right, makes sense.
Anton Malonik, owner of 10 First Street, Hopewell Junction, is requesting two twenty-nine foot front line variances and eleven foot rear line variance in order to replace an 1,100 square foot pre-existing dwelling with a 1,600 square foot dwelling, I'm going to assume, pursuant to section 194-17. Okay, First Street, so you're behind Frankie's?
Correct.
Okay, so there is an existing house there that is in very poor condition?
Abandoned for, I believe, 20 years is what's happened.
Yes.
I just closed on the property.
Okay.
My original thought process was to rebuild that structure.
Okay.
The structure was not protected for the 20 years, and it's beyond repair. So what I'm going to propose to the town is, there are two outbuildings from the house, a garage that's on the property line, a shed, which is actually a historic outhouse, that I think I'm going to get, I want to get in touch with the historical society, maybe get that off the property and give it to them.
Okay.
But the thought, or the pitch would be, take the buildings off the property line, that square footage, put it to the dwelling, and center the dwelling more or less on that property, or actually keep the existing rear line, which is one of the front lines, keep those two points, so that those two corners don't move, right?
Okay, it's a corner lot, it's a corner lot, right.
Corner lot, keep those two, so I'm looking for the one front yard, and then the other would be a side yard variance.
Okay, so what's the difference between what's, where the house sits right now and what you're asking for? Are you making this, are you asking to just replace what's there, even albeit it's a larger house, or are you actually making the variance worse?
The foundation will be bigger, so the variance becomes worse.
That's what I'm asking, so...
And my sales pitch would be to take those buildings off the property line and clear that space, which gets everybody off of each other's property, and just increase the size of the house.
Okay.
And as you can imagine...
So you're going to, you're going to deal with other non-conforming issues, but you're asking for a little bit of relief here.
Again, you know the dwelling and so do the neighbors, and I was out there last Thursday night and met a couple of them, and as you could imagine, they're all in, so I don't think I'm going to have any opposition to anything I do there. And again, what I'm thinking down the road, Norma, essentially is going to be a bungalow cottage-type home, something that fits that early nineteen...
The character of that neighborhood, that's important.
Yeah, and it belongs there, I'm not going to drop a flat ranch, I'm not doing a modular, but I'm going to do something relatively small, again, master bedroom on the first floor. It's in town, if it's an older couple, it really works well for them, that kind of thing.
Right, okay.
But nothing...
The dilemma that we have is that this now is going to be new construction, you're not dealing with the existing footprint, so, and you have a long lot, it extends right to left, however you want to deal with it. As you're looking at floor plans for a new house, do you have the opportunity to make it longer, as opposed to bringing it closer to the front line?
Yes, I didn't want to, that's going to take me and turn me. That particular neighbor, it's the worst one in the neighborhood, so my front door now faces that. The other guy, George, who's the Verizon guy, it's the lesser of two evils, and so my thought process was, look onto First Street, because I don't think, my understanding is, the lady in that house, her mother owns it, mother lives upstate somewhere, and there's absolutely no maintenance there, it looks just as bad as the place that I just purchased. So if I could avoid that facing, that would be ideal, if not, I'll...
So you have a specific house plan in mind of what you're looking at, as opposed to...
I have a thought process, I mean, you want, I have, just to give the board an idea.
Yeah, because...
And excuse my rendering of the window.
No, it helps us to get a visual, yes. This is the property, it's behind Frankie's, okay, on the corner of First Street and Church Street.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Something along those lines, cottage, bungalow, you know?
I guess the question is, are there other plans out there that would, you could work with, given the lot that you have? That's the research that you kind of have to do for us.
Look, I'm kind of flexible, I don't know what else to say, I'm going to be probably the least resistant guy you've ever met, whatever you need me to do.
Wow.
I just want to go.
Okay, well, and we don't want to delay you, the dilemma is just because it is going to be new construction, you have more opportunity than somebody who's not going to move that footprint, so that's all, we have to understand, is this your only option, or is it really self-created?
The depth of this particular house is 33 feet, and which is what's on this plan.
Okay.
Think about that, that's really not that deep.
No, it's not.
It's not.
I mean, a typical garage is going to be 24, so you...
If I spin it, Norma, now what am I doing, 22 feet wide, so I got to, so I'm really kind of...
1,600 square feet is not a large house to begin with. 1,100 is tiny, but we've actually had requests for smaller than that, so I don't know, what does the rest of the board think?
I mean, the neighborhood is not going to, the character of the neighborhood is not going to change substantially, and then again, the applicant is consolidating several lots, so...
I mean, the house he's proposing is the dotted line, correct?
Correct.